All right, I'm going to go ahead and bring the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council at February 27th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Seven I.
All right. Also, I wanted to let everyone know Alderman Favor reached out to me and let me know ahead of time that he wasn't going to be able to make it tonight. With that, time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Shadow Gentry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shadow. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. Would take a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Here. Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
The agenda has been approved. All right, Agenda Item D, Presentations. We have a presentation from the DeKalb Public Library, their annual report.
Evening, everybody. I sent over the annual report as required by the state, so you should have that. Thank you for having me here tonight. I was just going to give a little update about what the library's been doing for the past year and sort of what we plan to do moving forward. So 2022 felt like things were kind of back to normal for us. 2021, there was still, people were still nervous about coming in and things like that. Now it's more back to normal, which has been particularly evident in our programming turnout. Children's programs have been gangbusters. We've had standing-room-only crowds for large events. We're going to go back to scheduling multiple sessions of some things to get enough room for everybody. Also having lots of happy kids at our Pokemon and Beyblade Clubs, our Family Fun Science programs, and our homeschool happenings activities. Our teens and tweens have rediscovered the library. We get a lot of kids from Clinton Rosette. There was sort of a dip for a while, but they're back. We're kind of one of the only after-school hangout spots in town, so we've given them, the teen room has kind of been turned over to sort of louder activities, video games, air hockey, different kinds of craft activities and things like that. And we've actually expanded the space during the daytime upstairs to have a teen lounge area so they can play quiet board games and be sophisticated. So far, so good. We've had adult and all ages programs that are bringing people together. Our after-hours programs are particularly big. This Saturday, we had to get a whole lot of extra chairs because we were expecting maybe 30 or 40 people, and we got about 100 for our after-hours jazz concert. We have more of those coming up, but it's fun. Now we're going to have to put out all the chairs every time. And again, 309 Creative has been offering lots of tools, machines, classes. Our painting programs have been particularly popular for all ages. We're going to start buying paint in bulk because for a little while, we were buying the little mini tubes, and now we've got to get like those big school buckets of acrylic. We are looking forward to the future, turning out more daytime adult programs. We've got a partnership with Club 55 that we're working on. We're bringing back some of our popular programs from before the pandemic that were in the daytime, and we're also going to add a regular rotation of lectures, financial workshops, art classes, and book clubs during daytime hours. Now that we have groups meeting again, we've seen an increase in our requests for meeting rooms. In order to meet that need, we've also converted the Nancy D. Castle Collaboration Classroom upstairs, which was our maker's space before we expanded it into the other room. That is now a space available for the public, and we're having some of our own programs up there also. So we now have five public meeting rooms that can be used by anyone in town. This year, we've been able to put a greater emphasis on services to the public. Our free black-and-white printing has become one of the most popular amenities in town, and for the past few months, we've seen a considerable uptick in requests for notary and voter registrar services. So we're getting more staff members trained so we can provide those to the public for free also. Notaries in particular, I don't know what happened, but I think we started advertising them, and now people come get things notarized here. In addition to being a community center, we haven't forgotten that the books are the main attraction. One of our current focus areas has been on increasing readers' advisory services. We recently revamped our weekly e-blast and are getting a new cataloging system through the library consortium. That should make the search process easier and also more engaging. People will be able to leave book reviews on the things that they enjoy, stuff like that. And we're also working on some new methods to help people find a good read, whether it's expanding their access to the newest bestsellers, increasing our selection of ebooks, or suggesting books that remind them of their favorite author or within their favorite genre. Last year, we completed our three-year strategic plan, and I'm glad to say that we've accomplished almost everything we'd set out for ourselves. I was telling Greg before the meeting started that we had a list of about 60 or 70 items, and I think we only had three that we weren't able to finish, which, considering that the pandemic happened right in the middle of it, was kind of impressive for us. We're working on the next plan based on feedback from the community and the staff. There's some great ideas going into it already, and we're hoping to have a roadmap for the next few years done hopefully by April. Finally, the library is lucky to have such an amazing, dedicated staff that's committed to public service. Their hard work and creativity has made us a wonderful place to be, and we're also especially lucky to have such a supportive and engaged community to serve. It's been very nice having things feel like they're back on track. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Counsel, questions, comments?
For me, thanks for letting us have the community sessions regarding the mural.
Oh, sure.
I went to the first one. It was well-turned-out, or great turnout, so that was wonderful. And then also, thanks for donating some space for the creation of the mural.
Oh, we're so excited.
Yeah, I got to go back in the bowels here. You forget how big this place is until you traverse it underground, and it was pretty impressive. And that space is going to be well-used, so appreciate that.
Kind of a rabbit warren, but we're going to put up little signs to get people back here, but I'm looking forward to putting my little pieces in the butterfly or whatever.
Yeah, same here, same here.
Anything else, counsel? Oh, your predecessor, Dee Coover, used to give a stat on number of people. Like, do you have any way of...
I don't have it with me. You mean, number of people who've used the library?
Yeah.
I can, I can go look. I have it written down because we just turned in our annual report. I can't remember. I feel like it was about 90,000, but I'd have to go double-check for you.
Okay, just curious. She always, that was her main stat, so.
Oh, how many people come in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can email it to you when I walk back that way.
All right, thanks. Anything else? All right, appreciate it, Emily.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation. Sasha Cohen. And as a reminder, you have three minutes.
Mayor, members of council, I'm here because I'm tired of the disrespect shown to residents by Alderman Scott McAdams. His perpetual disregard for others, including his alleged threatening of a local business, harassment of a resident who dared speak against him, and quote "cycle of verbal, emotional, and mental abuse." The people of DeKalb deserve better. I'm going to read a couple selections from various police reports and court filings that exist regarding Alderman McAdams. Regarding the Tri-State towing incident, quote, "McAdams told me that he drove with his girlfriend to their office to get the car and complain." He mentioned that when talking to them, he dropped his City of DeKalb Alderman ID. He turns back to the window and pulls his City of DeKalb Alderman identification out of his wallet. He reaches into the window and puts this ID on the desk. He said he decided to quote "pull some clout" and quote "play his best card." He wanted to quote "let Tri-State know who they were messing with." That is a lie to the police regarding the dropping of his Aldermanic badge versus what the police recognized on the video, and an admission of utilization of his power and status as an Alderman for personal benefit. Next. "He started to yell at my daughter and stepped closer to her in a threatening manner. I stepped between them, told him that he could not yell at my daughter. He said that he will not be yelled at by a child. I told him that he is 52 years old and he will not yell at my child. He said that he will yell at anyone he wants. I told him that if he did not stop, I would call the police. He told me to do it. I called the police, he laughed and went downstairs. Any man that steps up to me is a threat. She said that she was incredibly scared. I had to watch my daughter cry as well, and it hurt worse because you're supposed to protect your kids. I apologized to her and said that she deserved better. She said that I did too." You have disgraced your office, disgraced this city, and if you had any sense of decency, shame, or honor, you would resign and do it now. Shame on you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. Number one, appointment of Sean Langley to the Citizens Environmental Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31st, 2024. Number two, appointment of James Carlin of the DeKalb County Health Department as an ex-officio member of the Citizens Environmental Commission. And number three, reappointment of Nick Newman to the Citizens Environmental Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31st, 2024. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
All right. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any comments or questions on any of this, counsel? All right, hearing none. We need roll call on appointments, right? Yeah, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
All right, those three have been appointed. Moving on to Agenda Item G, Approval of the Minutes. Minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 23rd, 2023. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any comments or questions on our minutes? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Consent Agenda. Number one, Accounts Payable and Payroll through February 27th, 2023 in the amount of $2,785,346.06. Number two, Freedom of Information Act FOIA Report of January 2023. And number three, FY 2022 Human Services Funding Fourth Quarter Report. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any comments or questions? All right, roll call to approve the consent agenda, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item I, Public Hearings, we have none. Agenda Item J, Considerations, we have none. And Agenda Item K, number one, Resolution 2023-022, Amending Resolution 2022-023 to extend the deadline for the issuance of a packaged liquor license with supplemental drive-through licensure for Blue Ridge LLC, 1221, located at 1221 West Lincoln Highway. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first two resolutions on your agenda tonight are related. They refer to a grouping of licenses and allowances that were first authorized back in September of 2018. And more specifically, as you know from your background, there is a request for an extension for a, the issuance of a bar liquor license supplemental to a video gaming establishment. That is actually the second resolution, but the first one is integral to everything else, and that's a license for a drive-through packaged liquor store and a license for, and the process by which a building permit would be issued for the construction of the building that would have that packaged liquor store and the drive-through. So some members of this council have a memory of this process. We're now at a point where there have been a number of extensions, three council extensions, one that was allowed by the council, and was to go through the city managers. There have been four in time. And to be fair, this span of almost five years included a couple of very hard years, as we all are well aware, with the COVID pandemic and the impact that had, particularly on hospitality businesses, and the fact that in this case, the heart of the enterprise, which is the Fatty's Restaurant, was closed down by governmental edict for a good part of a year and then some. So why talk about this tonight? Well, because the last extension that was given just about a year ago, short of one day, gave a final extension, at least according to the conversation a year ago, up to this time, and we thought it was fair for all concerned, the parties involved, the council, to have a general conversation about how to proceed. And depending on what the council wants to do, there would also be an action agenda at the same time. You can take this in two pieces, and that's what I've proposed that we do tonight. I will say that after this agenda was circulated and published on Thursday morning, the petitioners, Jeff Dobie and Jeff Richardson, Jeff Richardson is here tonight and will want to speak, did submit a number of detailed plans, architectural plans, and some renderings showing what is referenced on a handout that's before you tonight at your seats. And it seems, on the basis of that, that they are in a position to seek a building permit pending your decision tonight on licensure and extensions of various things. My suggestion, just to give you something to aim at, not my forehead, is the, and there are drawings that are coming up now on the screens for your review, is that, and I talked with Jeff Richardson about this before the meeting, it seems to me eminently practical to be able to have the usual back and forth, the supplemental of these particular plans for review, and maybe a couple of back and forths having to do with a couple suggested changes and that kind of thing. To have a permit issued for the construction of this particular building in the next 60 to 90 days, and if that occurs, what I would suggest then, back up, what I would suggest is that we allow that, an extension of 90 days with that as a condition of proceeding further, because once they get the permit, you have six months to complete the job. And that would take us to the end of the construction season, take us into just before the holidays. At that point, we can, I would assume substantial completion. That, I'll give you that as, I didn't recommend that here because we didn't, I didn't know at the time that there might be some plans to accelerate this, but it looks like there are going to be enough to get a pretty good head start here. I'd recommend that for your consideration.
Counsel?
Yes.
Alderman Verbic.
I'm generally supportive of business investment in the City of DeKalb. Unless it's to the detriment of the City of DeKalb, is there a detriment to granting this extension to this request? Is there a downside to granting this request? I'm asking you, sitting here.
You're asking me. Okay. I was going to say, I was going to yield to the council on this.
I mean, you could look at a downside, I mean, additional liquor, additional video gambling. I mean, if that's a downside you're looking at. I don't think there's anything, I mean legally, or if we make an extension here, if that's part of your question, but I'd have to defer to...
My, I'll just say, if, had it not been for the, the plans, as you can see, they're fairly well-developed, site plan and so forth, and we could talk, why didn't we see them before? It's immaterial. They're here. It looks like this project could begin in the next 60 to 90 days, as I said. Had it not been for these, I would say I don't see a show of good faith. What is the good faith? What is the reputational consideration here of which I think maybe you're referring to?
Right, yeah. No, I've seen a sizable investment by the business owners already at this point, so I guess if there is harm being done, then sure, it's a consideration. But if there's no harm with allowing this extension, then, you know, I'm absolutely supportive of it.
I'll just be very, in fact, I see no harm in allowing the extension for the, on the basis of this, because it looks like we're going to get, we're going to see something tangible as a result of it. And I think that's good for the community.
And are there ramifications if this doesn't happen? So again, nice pictures, but we've been painted pictures before, so what do we have to fall back on if this is not followed up with?
May I answer that?
Sure.
So I'm, every day, I represent our services, the services you say are appropriate and that we, the department heads and others carry out. And in that process, there has to be some integrity. We have some rules. We are agreeable to modifying them in ways that will apply to everybody, not just for, you know, favored people and all the rest of that. We're trying to be fair and equal in the way we apply the rules. But for people to have respect for the rules, they have to be, there has to be some accountability. In this case, it's not fines and so forth, but it is a commitment to complete what's promised. And I think generally, on the, from the private sector side, the same feelings exist. What can I do to demonstrate my commitment and my integrity?
So we would have deliverables in 90 days, or we're just done? Is that what I'm hearing then, or?
I threw this up as a jump ball.
Put that up to council, I guess.
I think it's a place to start.
Well, the deliverable, I mean, they have to apply for a permit with, well, within the next 90 days.
Have the, have the permit approved.
Yeah.
And we will not dilly-dally and in any way restrain our action for whatever reason.
And I would say if they miss the application to apply for a permit in the next 90 days, then that's it. I mean, and then after that, like you said, they had six months to be a, what was the six-month period to get in construction?
Yeah, and that's, that's in our code, and it's in the building code that we adopt. And that six months can be extended again if there is quote "substantial completion." It happens often toward the end of the year because of the climate we live in. People can't get their outside yards in. There are some things that were delayed because of early cold weather. We, we don't say, oh, too bad, you got to tear it down, so, yeah.
I saw another hand. Alderman Larson?
I agree with Mike Alderman Verbic about appreciating businesses who have been so great to DeKalb and everything. But we have, and I don't want to get off to the side here about video gaming and different things, but one of the 10 licenses that we have and that we're approving, or have approved, is held right now by Fatty's to be in here. And so while you could say, well, that will come to DeKalb, if I'm looking as a DeKalb person, it could have been making money for three years if another business had gotten that license and had it up and running. So if I look at, and I've often said, I'm not just for Second Ward, I try to look at the city when I'm up here. And so to me, it's what you're saying, you're not, you know, I've got to stand up here as the rest of the citizens and saying, we've already given several years and it hasn't, we don't have one penny from that gaming enterprise. So I'm not sure exactly what I'm asking for. You've come up with a lot of things, but, and I don't know your books, your business or anything else. I don't want to put some pressure that you can't comply with. That's what you guys have to decide, but it's like really, it's time to, it's got to be completed in my mind. And that really, and I think, I'm not sure what the timeline is, but because of our short building, I mean, I think there should be some shovels in the dirt within 90 days to get a building completed by fall. I mean, I want to see some real...
Jeff, we're gonna, I'm opening up for just questions and comments, but there's something that you definitely want to respond to. Feel free to come up on the podium, and I'll call on you. And I don't know if you want...
That would be my question. For someone here, can they speak to some of this?
Yes, yes.
That would help a lot, I think.
Yep, yep.
First of all, I want to thank you for being patient on this. It's been a tough round, I guess, for the COVID and everything. And even with the Dobie family, I recommended over the past years not to do it because it just, financially, it wasn't right. They could have put him in dire straits because their business was not doing well. We go through two years of COVID, 21, 22, or 2021. And 22 is a rebuilding, but still, they're only 75% back to what they were pre-COVID. It's a big deal, you know? So if he would have built it during the COVID, it might have financially strapped him, and that would have been a problem. It would have been completed. Who knows what would have happened? But my recommendation, and other people he had talked to said the same thing, it's just too risky to build. Because it's, you can see on that paper there, you know, the wood was up four times what it was pre-COVID. That's a big jump. So it's coming down pretty close to what it was pre-COVID, so that's a good thing, just for lumber. A lot of the other materials are still high, but they're not as, as much used in that as it is, the bulk of it is the wood, so.
What about, I mean, life always interjects itself into every project. So if we had a global pandemic, one thing, then supply chain issues, then, which would cause an increase in building materials. Now, you've got interest rates on the rise. But this is, this is life. How do we know that if there's any extension here, that, that really, next year, we can't wait to go to the ribbon cutting? How do we know the next thing isn't going to come up, and you're going to want another extension a year from now?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't think he'll do it either, but I think we'll be fine on this because he's at the point now where he can afford it on the, on the startup of the project, and then as he goes through it. Now, he's going to have a lot of increase. You kind of saw on that, that sheet where if he goes from 4% money to 7%, it's $5,000 a month difference. That's a big nut. So, but eventually, those rates are going to come down, so he takes the risk in the short term, but then he picks it up down the road, and he'll be fine. But the gaming is a huge component of this whole thing. Without the gaming, it doesn't float the boat. So, yes.
So what is next in terms of timeline? You know, what, what are you guys, when are you planning to get dirt moving?
What I want to do is, I talked to an excavator just a couple weeks ago about it and stuff, to get him out there and remove that slab and get that out of there, and start doing some underground if we can do the sewer and water and electrical, at least prep it because we have to go underground, things like that, we get started. We can't do it until we have a plan that's approved, but nevertheless, our plans are pretty much ready to go. We just had to tweak them, print them, and bring them to you. It should be pretty quick.
So when would you apply? When would you apply for the permit, and when do you think, once you've received that permit, you'll start busting stuff up?
I'd talk to the architect, make sure he's okay with it, but hopefully, it's so close, I would think by the end of March, or even sooner, hopefully sooner. Because we have the, we've done all the site and got that approved for zoning, so that's a big hurdle, which we just did in 2001, got approved in July, I think.
I'd like to roll out of what Bill mentioned and what Alderman Larson mentioned. You know, I think, I think we're doing everything we can to be business-friendly, but if you take a step back and you look at this, and it's been going for, for five years, you know? So I'd like to see some, some good faith show that dirt is really going to move.
You will.
Because we've, while all this is happening, you know, while, while life is happening, while we've had a pandemic, concurrent to that, we have had extension after extension, and there's been no word that, well, I understand that the business risks that are, that are there, I get that, but I'm, to Alderman Larson's point, you know, we've earmarked a video gaming license for three, four years and foregone all the, all of our revenue that we could have earned from that.
Correct.
So I want to be sensitive, but I want to see some progress, too.
I agree. So do I. I don't like doing this either.
Alderman Smith?
Jeff, how long did that, what was on that property before? That's what I'm sitting here trying to remember.
Well, when I was a kid, it was, it was a pancake house.
Sambo's.
Sambo's Pancake House, yeah.
Thank you.
And then it was...
I didn't thought you did know that, Alderman Smith.
Yeah. Didn't you help build it? Here we go. Now you made me lose my train of thought. Thank you. And that lot sat empty for how many years when they tore it down, or did you, did you tear it?
No, we didn't tear it down. It was way before us.
So I guess where I'm going is, that's an empty lot that's been sitting there for probably 10 years, 15, 20 years?
It could be 20 years. It's been a long time.
Over 20, okay.
It needs to be rebuilt.
I know the projects you've done, so I have no doubt, I have faith in you to continue the project. Actually, we, we've known each other. So I know, I think if you're involved to the extent that I will see some movement on the project. I feel very comfortable with that. I know your projects, like I said, and you're one of your partners. You know, I'm torn, Jeff, I'll be honest with you, I'm, you know, but I think, yeah, one more shot I would be willing to take, but like I think everybody else in council is, we need something. to take. But like, I think everybody else in council is, we need something, you know, to, for good faith.
I agree.
This is really.
And you'll get it.
You know, I'm looking at you like, yeah.
Yeah, Jeff and I have talked about this, and mainly, it was a financial thing. And I, you know, I sit down with him and tell him, this is my opinion. This is what you have to do and be prepared for. And I think he is.
How are you with materials? I mean, I know I'm having a problem on a couple of projects with materials. Is that?
That's a shot in the dark, no matter what week it is. We don't know. But that's why to start it now, at least get the ball rolling, and getting materials ordered. So even if we're just putting concrete down, if we had to set the materials on the pavement, then they set.
And I'm going to assume, I guess I'll just mention it, the financial backing is there, whether it be bank or otherwise.
Correct.
Okay. That's all that really hit. City manager?
He went to lunch. But I think that his recommendation is, if you wanted to see that good faith and have the, have the developer here submit the building application and the final plan and plat, that we amend the current resolution that's before you to add that as a condition precedent. I think the developer represented that the application can be made by the end of March. That would give us some time to review it and issue it so that dirt and shovels can be in the ground shortly thereafter.
Well, and what I'm hoping to see is, I mean, obviously, apply for the permit within 90 days. The substantial completion, I'd like a little more explanation on what that is. Because I don't want to get here a year from now, and, you know what, the slab's down, there's some materials on site, but yet, you're asking for another extension because X, Y, or Z. How can we make sure that this is moving forward?
My apologies. I've never done that. But I wanted to see about the final plan and the final plat, what the conditions were. And in your background, and I didn't recall, but thank you, Dan, for pointing this out to me. The final plan and the final plat that are still missing, in addition to, now we've got some building plans, have to go back through the plan commission and then to the council. So now, we can do that pretty quickly. If you have those, Jeff, do you have those?
Yes.
The final plan and the final plat.
The final plan, yeah, I have what we think we're going to do, but we haven't had the architect finish and stamp it and deliver it.
So I think we need to spell this out, but I'm going to make a proposal here. We can, we have a plan commission and two council meetings every month, right? So, but I would say the final plan and plat should be done within 60 days. That gives you time for, they're not ready, they would have come with that, I think. So it gives you a little time, and then back and forth, and review with Zach Gill and Dan Olson. And that's done within 60 days. And that a building permit is, meanwhile, the building department can be talking with the architect about these plans, which is the more detailed issue, not so much the final plan, plan. And that that is done in 90 days, which takes us to June 1st, which is, you know, that's a little late in the construction year, but it's time to get going. And in the meantime, if you were to pull that old floor slab out, that would help things along. And to get your, you can do that just with the permission of the city engineer. So that's something that can be done in the next couple of weeks. You could start as the weather permits. So if you don't mind, I'd like to lay out a schedule, if I could. And if you're agreeable to that, we can add that as conditions and bring it back at the next meeting. And you'll see the resolution spelled out with what those are.
So it'd be tabling it for now, is your recommendation?
Yes.
Back to my question, though. I understand issuance of the permit, and I understand we'd be digging some things up.
What substantial completion?
Yes.
Temporary occupancy?
By the February of next year, whatever.
By whatever day you say, yeah, whatever you say. So that means it's basically safe to occupy, but there are still some details, and maybe some final trim pieces. You know, it's not so important to the building department whether you have window treatments, and it's also not as important to us at that point, particularly in now the onset of winter, that you have grass growing, or your trees planted, and all the rest of that. But you need to have the asphalt in and the pavement striped appropriately, and then the building has to have all the life safety issues taken care of.
Okay.
I'm looking at you to.
Yes.
So a year from now, that's where you would be?
Yeah.
Yes, Alderwoman Larson?
Can we put in this resolution that the VGE has to be operational, has to be open for business? Because to me, when I'm thinking of the rest of the people of Decal, that has to be up and running. And so, yeah, I don't care about trees and grass. But for tax dollars and budget and everything, can that be part of it?
Yeah, that would be because it's part of the building proper. It's part of this, what you see. Am I correct?
Yep.
It's part of what this grand building has a number of uses in it, and one of those is the video gaming establishment.
They would need their temporary occupancy.
Yeah, temporary occupancy.
Can you get the, what is video, what's the VGE license contingent upon? Like, with the state? The state's already authorized it. We've already authorized it. So really, it's just plugging in some terminals, providing they're available. I don't know if that's an unreasonable explanation, or expectation, or reasonable.
I don't know much about the terminals, whether they're available or not. I would assume, I talked to a guy today that does it for Sullivan's Tap, and he, sharp guy, and he seemed like it wouldn't be a problem. But that's not my call, it's Mr. Doby's call on where he's getting them from. I don't know where he gets them now.
Yes, Alderman Smith?
Jeff, do you have a contractor lined up?
No. It's tough to get people, it's tough to get people to give quotes, even over the past few years. You'd send them out, and they wouldn't come back. And that was difficult.
I'm happy to share. I know one, I'm sure that would take it on, potentially. I think it's early enough, but.
Well, let me know.
Yep, yep.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
So I hear what you're saying. We could make that the requirement. What, because life can get in the way, and things can be modified. But I want to be abundantly clear, like, if we vote yes, I know we're tabling it right now, but if we vote yes in the future, I won't even, I'll have to be override, written by council to bring it to us as an agenda item a year from now. So this is, this is the last.
I'm tired of doing it, too.
Yeah, I know you are. What I would recommend is an abundance of communication. If something's going awry, the state is holding up licensing, and they can't put a quarter in legally or something, we need to be aware of that. But I do like that idea. We're really looking for, you guys are going forward, and to Alderwoman Larson's point, it is costing the taxpayer money at this point.
You know what I like about this project? The easiest part is the frame up. Because the downstairs is open, wide open, wide open. Pretty much, all three units are just filled with either bathrooms, or I guess a bar in one of them, in the gaming, I believe. And the liquor store is just coolers. I mean, the only thing I could see an issue with, and I don't think it would be, if there would have issue with getting coolers, I don't, I don't know. Because that's the majority of what's inside. Inventory, I'm sure, is available.
Okay. City manager?
Well, I would say, Jeff, at this, what I'm hearing the council say, correct me if I'm wrong, that all that is your risk. And you have an abundance of time, if the council falls through on this. And we'll spell that out, and bring it back at the next meeting. And that will be thrown together this weekend, and there'll be lots of time at the staff level and members of the council to see some early drafts of this. So we're all on the same page. We'll come in, and it's going to be something that is doable, but we have to stick to it. And as the mayor said, things will happen. I hope the war in Ukraine goes well. That's an editorial comment, but for the Ukrainians. But we don't know what's going to happen, and what other supply-side problems there may be. But if you're worried about coolers, I'd order them.
Well, I think that's the case with everything. Either look into it and see, at least put them on hold, and put a deposit down. They're in the queue. So, I agree.
Question? Alderwoman Morris?
I just, I just want to give an alternative perspective. You know, I feel like what everyone's saying is, get it done, right? You know, I feel like the lot's been vacant, and the only real time pressure that it feels like exists is an arbitrary pressure created by the council by limiting the number of VGE terminals that are allowed. So we have this theoretical pressure to get it done because we want those terminals operating because we set the limit to 10. And this one's held up. So I'm just saying that, in this context, we've created all the boundaries, and I don't think that they are very business friendly. So I would be in support of supporting extensions until they want to get this done, until it's, you know, but I understand what everyone's saying. I respect your perspectives. But I just see it a little bit differently in the context of that time pressure that we're feeling.
But every year, it's going to come before us, whether we have a limitation on VGS or not. I mean, it's been coming before us for five years. And the amount of time and energy, staff, building the background material, the discussions we're having right now, the meetings, I spent an hour and a half with Jeff Richardson and Jeff Doby going through this. I'm sick of it, quite frankly. I just want to get this project done and move on, for me. So I know we can, we can just sit here and extend, and extend, and extend, but at some point, there has to be some sort of accountability. You said you're going to do a thing, you need to do it. And that's my impression on this. Go ahead.
I do agree with Alderwoman Morris, that we have set a boundary here. And I would appreciate it if you would cooperate with the city staff so that we can all see this through to a positive conclusion. Because I don't think, there's nobody on this board who wants to see it fail. So we just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Well, working with Bill and with Dan has been great. I mean, considering when I did the addition on fatties, that was not so great. That was a hard, that was a hard haul. Different people.
Different time.
Different time.
For sure.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, city manager?
Councilmember Morris brings up a good point. It's an interesting point. I think the difference in the point of view, and the reason I express some concern for urgency, is the difference between the policymaking and the operational side. If there were no limit on how long it took to build a house, you could have a problem in a neighborhood with a built, half-built house. I have in mind a house in Center Cross in Sycamore, if you ever travel that route. It's been under construction for five years to the angst of every neighbor around them. So if deadlines meant nothing, then we would be creating other issues. And so I, we're the first to look at hardships and what might be a mitigating circumstance. But it's not open-ended. How about if we're building 13, redoing 13th Street and just decided, yeah, it's a lot cheaper just to let it sit for a while and see what happens? Or how about when new companies are coming, and they want to know, does it make any difference when we apply? Well, yeah, it does. We have these meetings, and here's a schedule, and this is happening. And what if we just said, well, what does it matter? They want to know that we keep to a timetable because they keep to a timetable. And I think most businesses do, if they're going to be successful. So hence, that's why we do it at the operating side. It may not be the same. I understand, it was slightly different perspective on things if you're at the policymaking level.
So you'll go back, you'll come up with a resolution on the final a little bit more. We'll run it by you, Jeff, ahead of time.
Yep.
Just to make sure that the timelines are acceptable. You can bring it back before us, and we'll go from there then. Right, Bill?
We'll need a motion to table it.
Yep.
Yep. I wasn't done talking. I'm almost there, almost there, man. Anything else, city manager?
No.
Anything else, council?
One more.
Yeah, Alderman Smith?
Matt, I guess, if this expires, though, is that an issue?
No, that's the same as the status quo. I mean, you can rectify it later, over the next, by having.
Making me feel better. Thank you.
If it doesn't matter to you, then it's okay.
What did I do tonight?
Well, I'll tell you from Jeff and Marissa Doby, they're very grateful. It's been tough. And, you know, they're doing this out of their pockets. They don't get any other funding for anything else. It's them. So.
And they are great supporters of the community, individually, fatties, absolutely, understand. This is a proven business out there that has done a lot for the community. 100% agree.
It'll be nice to get that lot cleaned up.
Yeah, it will be nice to get that lot cleaned up. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Appreciate you coming on, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
All right, I take a motion to table this resolution?
Motion to postpone. Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Roll call?
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
All right, we tabled Resolution 2023-022. Moving on to number two, Resolution 2023-023, amending Resolution 2022-023 to extend the deadline for the issuance of a par liquor license with supplemental licensure for video gaming for Blue Ridge LLC 1221, located at 1221 West Lincoln Highway. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City manager?
I think, given the previous discussion and action by the council, that I would recommend that you table this one as well, and we'll bring them both back at the next meeting.
So I take a motion to table Resolution 2023-023?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
All right, Resolution 2023-023 has been tabled. Moving on to number three, Resolution 2023-024, authorizing the purchase of a Phoenix G2 Station Alert System from U.S. Digital Designs for the Decal Fire Department in an amount not to exceed $124,557.80 using ground emergency medical transport funding, GEMT Fund 130. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager?
There are two parts to this particular subject as well, this resolution and the volume one. But I think this will be easier. This concerns the bidding that I had authorized in behalf of the selection of vendors to provide a new station alert system for our three stations at the fire department. And I want to thank Chief Thomas and his staff for proceeding and thoughtfully working this through. The justification for this, I've given a little bit in the background. It's a 30-year-old system. It's the old, just wake them up with the loudest sound you can think of. And this helps not only with the alerting, but it also has to do with the integration of the police dispatch system and the fire noticing system. As the calls come in, the house is on fire, I call 911, eventually, that gets patched to the fire department. And the various interstices there are so ill-served by our current system, and a system that we really have trouble finding replacement pieces for. But I think it's imperative that we do something. This has been discussed for a couple of years at the staff level. We now have the GEMT fund, which provides the funding for it. And we anticipated this when the FY '23 budget was approved, and it was in the detail of that budget. And so it's before you tonight. The, there were four vendors that were invited to bid on this that have, this is a specialty item, obviously, not something you can buy at a local store. There was no bid from one of them. Another didn't meet the specs, or actually, two didn't meet. But the company, it's called Phoenix G2, provides a system that costs just a little under $125,000. There was, I think it was $275,000 that was established for this. That's a good price. That does not include the installation. It was before he denied us a recommendation that we go with Phoenix G2 Station Alert System for this, or that's the type. It's U.S. Digital Designs, excuse me, that met the specification. So your approval is recommended.
Questions, council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Resolution 2023-024 passes. Continuing to Resolution 2023-025, authorizing the purchase of a station alert system with component installation for the Decal Fire Department in an amount not to exceed $20,180 using ground emergency medical transport, GEMT Funding Fund 130. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager?
The installation was also bid out, as I mentioned earlier, and we got a very good price from Electrical Solutions Services LLC, an amount of $20,180. Together with the cost of the system itself, that brings us to. Together with the cost of the system itself, that brings us to just under $145,000, which again is $130,000 below what we thought we might have to pay for this. So we recommend your approval of this resolution.
Counsel? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2023-025 passes. Item five, Resolution 2023-026, authorizing the purchase of two Ford F-150 pickup trucks for the Public Works Department through Morrow Brothers Ford in an amount not to exceed $80,468. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Brian Favors here tonight, our Assistant Director of Public Works. And he brought this to me. This is a budgeted item, the replacement of two pickup trucks. We went to the state purchased, purchase contract vendor, which is Morrow Brothers. You've seen that name before. They, in our region, they provide a range of things, particularly with respective vehicles. And in this case, we were looking at the replacement of a 1997 GMC pickup and a 2003 Dodge Ram pickup. The total price that was offered was $80,468. It's all in, so we're recommending that to you tonight.
Counsel? Talk about trucks. Alderwoman Larson.
I just have to say that you've got a 26-year-old truck.
I know, right?
I can't believe they're still in service. Great job.
Great use of city dollars.
No kidding, no kidding.
So we can expect the same then? All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution 2023-026 passes. Moving on to Agenda Item L, ordinances, second reading, we have none. Agenda Item M, ordinances, first reading, Ordinance 2023-012, approving a special-use permit to allow the re-subdivision of an RC-1 Residential Conservation District zone lot into two single-family attached lots in accordance with Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 5.03.06, and approval of the final plat of the Bernowski subdivision located at 1104-1106 Lewis Street. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I believe the applicant, Mr. Bernowsky's in the audience tonight. Thank you for coming. This is something that we've done a number of times in the last couple of years. It makes a lot of sense if there's a duplex and the owner wants to not just rent, say, one half of it, but to be able to sell one half of it in fee simple. There has to be some action by the council to create a common lot line right down, hopefully right down the middle of the house. We have some requirements for the, the space on the, the land beneath those, those two different entities and the surrounding yards. As I point out in my background, one of those meets the minimum 3,500 square feet and the other is just a little shy of it. So what the Plan Commission had a look at also was a, was a small variance to allow both the, to be considered by you tonight. And the Plan Commission thought that was a reasonable variance, recommended that to you, and we recommend to you their, their action last week.
Counsel? Alderman Smith?
I just, this is the right thing to do. Me, two feet, I think, probably, right? So please, yeah, it's for my ward, so yeah, definitely the right thing to do.
Alderwoman Larson?
Just a question. I know, I think that the water in the sewer lines are still the same, but you're going to go with two. Like is there like a work order in that it's definitely going to get done so, or? I guess that would be the one thing, I think it's a great idea and perfect, but just to make sure that it gets completed.
If you can come up to the microphone so everyone at home can hear, that'd be great.
Yes, there are plans in the works to add another sanitary line and water service for one of the units. There is only one right now that splits off and serves both units. I've been working with, I've gotten quotes and been working from two contractors and then been working with one contractor to get that planned and taken care of, hopefully within the next month or so, so.
Thank you.
Because can this happen without them being split off?
That's our preference.
Yeah.
There are some that exist that have existed for quite a while that have that split. But in this case, this is by, by a conscious planned action and it ought to be done for, for the future, for, for the, the owner and the new owner.
Any other comments, questions?
Good point.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2023-012 passes on first reading. Take a motion to waive second reading?
Motion to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
Motion by, to waive second reading by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Questions or comments? Yes, Alderwoman Morris.
I was going to ask, I know the last time we did this, we talked about streamlining future processes for this, right? Do you remember that?
I think this was, I mean.
Maybe it was super streamlined, but we were talking, we were talking about, because the opportunity to do this is a big opportunity for homeowners. And so I think we were talking about maybe at the planning and development level. I don't know, making it easier.
It was a 15-minute stop, by the way. But because we've done this and we know what we need to do, but for the protection of the two owners, there has to be this common wall easement and so forth. Because if you get to a closing, that's going to get hung up by the attorneys on either or both sides. So if I may offer that opinion, so.
It's part of our call.
Yeah.
But for that reason.
Yeah, for that reason. So there has to be some exchange of documents. It goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission so that as it comes to you, the zoning piece of it, which is in this case about 100% of it, is, has been reviewed and then it comes to you.
So you're saying it's super easy anyway?
I think it's really easy.
Okay.
We're not, I, there was a time, not too many years ago, when we looked at this and it threw us into, you know, fits, but it's so common. There isn't a community that doesn't, of any size, that doesn't do this because people are trying to find value in, in an older home. And if it serves to have that kind of division, sometimes they don't. Sometimes there's no way to work it with the floors and they're, in the way they're aligned.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for Ordinance 2023-012. You are all set. You don't have to stick around. You can head on home.
Great, thank you.
You betcha. All right, moving on to Ordinance 2023-013, authorizing the Northern Illinois University annual contribution for integrated transit services. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager.
As part of our intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois, Northern Illinois University for Integrated Transit Services, we go through this once a year. Once a anticipated cost of our transit services to serve the students at Northern is established, then we come to you and ask for your authorization to, basically, we're going to receive 40% of that, as it's been calculated, with one exception, as you saw in the background. We have one route, Route 19, where the ridership consists primarily of residents, permanent residents of Decal. And for this reason, and, but some students who will travel this to get down to the newer job centers on the southwest side, for this reason, NIU provides a 20% local match. But on every other part of the transit system, it's 40%.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
First reading has been passed for Ordinance 2023-013. I take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Second reading has been waived for Ordinance 2023-013. All right, moving on to number, or letter N, Reports and Communications, Councilmember reports. Alderman Smith, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Okay. Alderman McAdams?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
Great work, Scott and all, by getting the word out about the bridge closures. Lucinda Bridge, Lucinda Avenue Bridge is on the border of Ward 6, and I've seen it everywhere. So thanks again, and everyone seems to be well-informed.
Green. Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderwoman Larson?
And just to kind of jump on the, the streets, I think there's been two ice storms since our last meeting. And I know ice is difficult and I had to be out on both days. And some of the country roads were a mess and I got into the city of Decal and they were just wet and it was easygoing. And Saturday night, I happened to be downtown. You couldn't get a table at a restaurant. You couldn't find a parking spot. It was, it was fabulous. And then finally, we're moving some grain at our farm and we had to go through Decal